Just call the meeting door and say applause.
That'll teach ya.
Applause allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with equal due justice for all.
Thomas, give the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Present.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Postma.
Present.
Bishusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number one is looking for a motion to adopt adoption of the agenda with the one addition. So moved.
Just second.
Thank you. Tom, roll call, please.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number two is a motion looking to approve the minutes from February first, 2021 meeting.
I move.
Obala? Okay, was your second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Item number three, recognition and award. I don't think we have anything official, but I would like to give some recognition to my son, whose it's 19th birthday today. I'm sure he's not watching or listening or anything.
(laughing).
Oh, come on, ye of little faith. Recognize the college kid's 19th birthday, anyway. So moving on to item number four, looking for a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Jason? Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Motion pa- uh, Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.[185.02][185.05](laughing).
I forgot you on the minutes. Councilmember Austin, at large, Austin. Thank you.
I'll go for that one, too.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom.
Six and a half to zero.
(laughing). Oh. Item number five, looking for a resolution reviewing the tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction for their property at 2108 14th Avenue Northeast.
Greg?
Thank you, mayor members. This is a property valued estimated at $355,000, part of our tax abatement program. It looks like another couple spec homes here showing some good face from Bigelow Lennon. It's in conformance with our adopted policy. This is a public hearing, and we need approval by council or denial.
Okay. Any questions, council? If not, looking for a resolution?
Anything from the public?
Oh, so move the resolution. No public in here unless Teresa's got some comments on it.
Nobody's on line.
We're on line, this public. I don't see anybody.
No, we're in the clear.
Okay.
All right.
Was there, was there a motion?
Fisher.
Paul, second?
Second.
Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you.
Similar to item number five, number six, just a little different price and a different address, slightly away.
That's it.
Reviewing the tax abatement application from Bigelow and Lennon Construction for their property at 2012 14th Avenue Northeast, looking to approve or deny the tax abatement. Greg, anything else on that?
Nope. This one's estimated value at $306,000.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions, or anybody in the public has any thing to say about it? There's no one here. Looking for a resolution, then, counsel?
So moved.
Jason?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
All right, now we begin the Mitch Wenham Show. Item number seven is a public hearing on street improvement on First Street Southeast, Oakland Avenue East to First Avenue Southeast, and First Avenue Southeast, South Main Street to Second Street Southeast, project number 21102. Looking for a motion approving the revised feasibility report. Mitch?
Yeah, so, mayor and council, we have made a revision to the feasibility report for the street width that we are proposing for First Avenue Southeast. Originally, on the feasibility report, we had it at 44 feet wide. We are proposing to bring that down to 40 feet wide. We would still have parking on both sides of the streets. It would just allow us to have better drainage on the boulevards, as well as slow traffic speeds through there.
Okay. Questions, counsel? So we'll handle the 7A first, looking for a motion approving the revised.
For a motion appro-
Public hearing.
Oh. We, we need to move for?
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing is over.
Any comments from the public?
Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this project? No? Okay. Then looking for questions, or also motion from council approving the revised feasibility report?
Move to approve the revised feasibility report.
Jeff, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Thomas. 7B is resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids, and looking for resolution. Mitch, any comments on that?
Yeah, so I've got, for the next five items, I've got presentations that were made to the public. We had a public info meeting for each of these projects last Wednesday. The meeting was held virtually on Zoom. We had a decent turnout, probably typical of what we'd see for in-person turnout from, from the public. But I presented all of these PowerPoints last Wednesday night, and now I'll run through them again quickly for you guys, and if you have any questions on any of them, I can answer them, and we'll go from there. Does that work?
So 7B, Mitch, that's where we're at right now. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yep, he's gonna go over the project.
Yeah.
You want me to start the presentation now? Sorry?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, sorry. So the first project we'll talk about tonight is First Avenue and First Street Southeast from, and we'll see where the project location is. So First Avenue from Main Street to Second Street. This would be the post office, and then there's a few businesses along here on this block. And then First Street from Oakland Avenue by the fire station to First Avenue. Here's a couple of pictures of the existing pavement conditions. This is First Street facing north. The street was originally constructed in 1953. And then here's a photo of First Avenue facing east. And again, this street was constructed in 1953. You can see how, it, it's actually in okay shape, but the, you can see the aggregate here showing through. The pavement is in need of repair, as well as underground utilities. So what we're planning to do on the project, we would remove the existing concrete pavement, and then reconstruct both First Avenue and First Street at 40 feet wide with new concrete pavement. We will replace all of the deficient sidewalk panels, install ADA compliant pedestrian ramps at all the corners where the sidewalk meets the street, and then we'd restore the boulevards and any other restoration that needs to take place. And then as far as underground utility improvements, we would have some storm sewer work, which involves replacement of main and manholes and catch basins, as well as sanitary sewer replacement on First Street. We'd replace the entire main on that one block there. And then finally, we would install subdrain underneath the road to collect groundwater, as well as provide a sump pump service to each property. And along with the project, Austin Utilities has water main work and electrical work on the project. So some of the schedule and impacts on this one, we would plan to begin construction in early May, and weather permitting, we would wrap up in August. This, this project's unique in that there are quite a few businesses in this three-block stretch, so that this project will be impactful to them and their customers. So we have created a temporary business access plan, and the individual properties will need to coordinate some garbage and recycling pickup things, items with their haulers. And in boulevard sprinkler systems, if there's any on the project, they're the responsibility of the property owners. So here's a quick look at the temporary business access plan, and I've gone through this with a majority of the businesses on this three-block stretch. I haven't been able to get a hold of a couple of them, but a majority have seen this. So, so starting here, this is South Main Auto. They have agreed to allow the offices that reside in this building to use their parking lot. So coming off of Main Street, we would create a temporary driveway through this grass strip between the two properties, and then these four businesses here would be able to access their parking lot. So we really appreciate that from South Main Auto, being able to work together to allow access to these four businesses. Couple other items, the apartment building and the parenting resource center, we would plan to install gravel drives to each of these parking areas during the project. This, this empty lot right here is owned by the HRA, and the HRA is allowing us to, to do that. So we would sell these temporary driveways, and then after the project's over, we would restore that to grass. And then finally, one of the bigger ones would be the post office. First Avenue will be entirely closed, so the, the normal access for people is this driveway right here. So we're gonna create a temporary driveway off of First Street. So, and it'd be an entrance only, allowing post office customers to come in, and then we'd create a second exit-only driveway over on Second Street, and kind of create this one-way loop through the post office property to allow their business to remain as normal as possible. Any questions on the business access plan at all?
Your honor?
Like I said, I've contacted most of the businesses, and they all appreciated the thought that we had on this, and are generally agreeable to everything that I've presented.
Okay. Chief McKeecon?
Mitch, just a quick question on the parenting resource center. There, I do know that it's important for them to have access to both those entrances for child custody exchanges. I'm just wondering if you've touched base with them to ensure that, that, that part of their operation would continue to exist during the project, and that their parents needing to exchange and go in the two separate doors would still be able to do so?
Yep, that's, that's the reason for the secondary parking area here, to kind of, the one, you'll be able to access their north parking lot over here, and then the secondary parking would replace this parking lot right there. And we would also provide some sort of temporary fence with a screen. They requested that to help screen the child custody issues and restraining order issues that they deal with.
Nope, sounds good. Appreciate your thoroughness in helping them out.
Anything else on that, Mitch?
Yeah, I move. Sorry, what was that?
Anything else on 7B, this particular project?
I'm just about done.
Okay.
So the benefits of the project, improved roadway, improved drainage, it's more visually appealing, and increased lifespan of the underground utilities, reduced maintenance costs, and then increased pedestrian safety with the head ramp and sidewalk improvements. So now on to the assessment portion. The total project cost is estimated at $815,000, paying through it via assessments, state funds, stormwater and wastewater funds. And of all the properties on this project, we're generating $124,000 of assessment revenue. And here's a breakdown of the residential and commercial street assessment rates that the council approved earlier this year, as well as the sidewalk assessment rates. And then, this is the same for all the projects, but there's three payment options for the assessments. Residents can pay the amount in full by October 29th without any interest. The second option would be to pay at least half of the amount by October 29th without interest, and then the remainder would be added to your property taxes over a 15-year period with a three-and-a-half percent interest rate. And then the third option would be to not pay any of the assessment by October 29th, and then the entire balance would be added to the property taxes over a 15-year period with that same three-and-a-half percent interest rate. And then we do have a financial assistance program for those that qualify financially and they live on the property. The assessment could be deferred until they sell the property. And lastly, this is just the location of, I have weekly construction updates on our construction website on the city of Austin webpage. I make occasional Facebook updates on our Facebook page, and then anything that's really important on the project, we will hand flyers out door-to-door to each of the residents. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mitch. That's a, that's quite a task to get that busy corridor and get the cooperation from all the businesses to create exits and parking lots, so I appreciate that. That's gonna be a very impactful project, but if we could, if we did Fourth Street last year, and that was a heavily traversed road, this should be no different. I'm hoping it'll go smoothly. Questions, counsel? Comments? If not, looking for a resolution for 7B? So move the resolution. Paul, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number eight, public hearing on street improvements on 19th Street Northwest, Oakland Avenue West to Fourth Avenue Northwest, and First Avenue Northwest, 18th Street Northwest to 19th Street Northwest, project number 21103, looking for a resolution on 8A, resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids. Mitch?
Okay. So a lot of the information on the next three projects is very similar, so I'll kind of highlight the important things that are relevant to each individual project, and then a lot of the other details are, are the same for all of them. So I'll skip over some of the stuff, but if you have any questions on anything, just let me know. So this project is 19th Street and First Avenue Northwest. This is located over by St. Edward's Church, and the Austin Public School District now owns this building. And this project is 19th Street from the Oakland Service Road to Fourth Avenue Northwest, and then First Avenue would be from 18th Street to 19th Street.
It's in bad shape.
Again, here's some pictures. As you can see, 19th Street has a lot of cracking and alligated pavement, as well as quite a few potholes. And then First Avenue has more of the same, where potholes and alligator, alligated pavement is starting to cause issues. So what we plan to do on this project, we would remove all of the asphalt pavement and curb and gutter on 19th Street, and then on First Avenue, we would only be removing the asphalt pavement and leave the curb and gutter in place, and make repairs in select locations to damage curb and gutter panels. Both streets would remain at the same width as they are today, and then we'd install the new curb and gutter on 19th Street and pave both 19th and First Avenue. And again, on this project, we are replacing deficient sidewalk panels, installing pedestrian ramps, and restoring boulevards. For underground work, again, it's the same storm sewer and sanitary sewer work. For sanitary, we're replacing three blocks on 19th Street from First Avenue to Fourth Avenue, and then we're gonna provide that same underground tile line for each resident to hook up their sump pump to, if they have one. And finally, Austin Utilities has water main and electrical work on both streets.
All right.
This project, we're looking to get started in May. We've kind of backed off the early June start, but we're looking at a, a mid-to-late May start on this project. And then First Avenue would start in late July or early August, once Austin Utilities wraps up with their water main work on 19th Street. And then we'd hope to finish up in October, weather permitting again, and some tree removal work would take place prior to the pavement removal. Some of the impacts, they're a little different on this project, where we're not providing temporary access for businesses. Generally, on a residential street, there's not access to residential properties during the project, so we require that residents have to park on the nearest adjacent street. If they have any boats, RVs, or other vehicles that they store on their property, they would need to move those prior to the project. We do provide handicap parking spaces as close to people's residence as possible, and if there's any other circumstances that we need to accommodate, we try to do so as best we can. And finally, garbage and recycling is just picked up on adjacent streets for the residents. Again, I'll skip some of this stuff. Same benefits as the other projects. So the estimated project cost for this one is $775,000, funded by assessments, the local street fund, and storm and wastewater funds. And we are generating $210,000 in assessments on this project. Again, the residential street reconstruction rate that council approved. The one difference on this project is we do have an assessment for curb and gutter at $18 per foot, and we assess for curb and gutter the first time that is, it is installed on a street. So a majority of 19th and First Avenue have curb and gutter currently, but there are a few missing sections. Those properties that had a missing section would be assessed $18 per foot for that curb and gutter. And again, the same assessment payment options and the same project updates. That's all I have.
Anybody present from the public want to be heard on this matter? Hearing none? Counsel, questions?
Yeah, I've got one question. When we talk about the assessment percent of the project, or do we look at the total project costs, or do we disclude the sanitary and storm sewer, so we're just looking at street improvements? So is-
Every year when I present the percent assessed per the project cost, that is only referring to the street improvement costs, not the underground sewer costs.
So in this, this case, we're getting 30% of all. So, okay.
Yep, roughly, yeah.
Thanks, Mitch.
Hey, Mitch, I've got a question. Can you walk through kind of how we determine which streets we're gonna do occasionally? I'll get questions around, you know, like, why is my street being done this year? It's a combination of what, kind of age and our plan and roads that most need it, right? Is that a fair understanding?
Right. A, a majority of the time, we're looking at the pavement quality, and as you can see from some of those pictures I presented, that pavement has quite deteriorated. Actually, every two years, I drive every street in town and, and give each street a rating from one to 10, one being bad, 10 being good. And that helps determine a lot of the street work that we do. But sometimes, the underground utilities could drive a project. You know, we could have a sanitary sewer main that's really failing and causing us problems, and the pavement might not be perfect, or it might not be completely deteriorated, but it's not perfect, so it's worth it to replace the entire road in order to get our underground utilities fixed. So a combination of both generally drives a project.
Do you have a pretty good playlist for that drive, or is that?
(laughing). Can you imagine?
I actually did it last summer, and I listened to a lot of podcasts, yeah.
(laughing).
All right, any other questions, counsel?
How to build a better road, right? (laughing).
Uh, just a quick quiz. What, what's the rating on 9th Street Southwest right now, Mitch? Come on. The 1700 block.
I'm pretty sure that's your street, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, what's the rating?
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I'm guessing like a four.
Okay. Good call.
So it's on the list, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Looking for a resolution for 8A?
I move.
Obala?
Since this is my street.
It's, uh, right on.
Second.
Joyce, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Bishusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Number nine is a public hearing on street improvements on 16th Street Northeast, Oakland Avenue East to Third Avenue Northeast, and First Avenue Northeast, Oakland Place Northeast to 19th Street Northeast, project number 21104, looking for resolution for 9A, resolution ordering improvements, improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids. Mitch?
Excuse me. Again, a lot of similar items here. So this is 16th Street Northeast from Oakland Avenue East to Third Avenue Northeast. East Side Lake would be just to the east of this project, and then we have First Avenue from Oakland Place to 19th Street. And I'll get to it a little later, but we're gonna split this project into two different phases. The first phase will include all of 16th Street, and then this one block of First Avenue. And then Phase Two would start after all of this paving is completed, and go from 16th to 19th Street. Here are some pictures. First Avenue Northeast is currently concrete, and if you ride down the street, it'll be very bumpy. A lot of the concrete's offset joints, that causes a very rough ride. A lot of cracked pavement. Austin Utilities has also had a lot of water main breaks on this street the last couple of years, so like I mentioned before, underground utilities are driving some of this project as well. And a couple pictures of 16th Street. This is an asphalt street, again, lots of patches and alligated pavement. Once pavement gets to this point, there's, there's not much salvaging it. There's, there's not much you can do to fix it at that point. So what we plan to do on this project, we remove all the concrete pavement on First Avenue, and then all the asphalt pavement and curb and gutter on 16th Street. Both streets will remain the same width they are today, and then we would replace, all the new pavement will be asphalt. So First Avenue is gonna go from a concrete road to an asphalt road. We'd make the same sidewalk and pedestrian improvements, same storm sewer improvements, replacing manholes and catch basins, and then sanitary sewer improvements will include manhole replacement and spot repairs. And then we'll also provide that same tile line and sump pump service to each property. Austin Utilities has water main replacement throughout the project, and on this one, they will also be doing gas main replacement, as well as underground electrical. Like I mentioned before, this is gonna be a two-phase, two-phase project with 16th and the one block of First Avenue going first in early May, and then Phase Two will start after Phase One has been paved, which is likely late June. And then Phase Two would, we'd expect to complete that in October, weather permitting again. There's a little bit of work that'll take place before the pavement is removed. Austin Utilities will be working to install their new gas mains on First Avenue prior to removal of pavement. And then same project impacts with residents not being able to access their driveways throughout the project. Same benefits. So the estimated cost on this project is just over a million dollars, again, funded by assessments, local street fund, and wastewater, and storm sewer funds. And on this project, we're generating $350,000 in assessments, with the total street cost at about $900,000. So we're in that 30 to 35% range for- So we're in that 30 to 35% range for percent assessed. So the increased assessment rates this year did have an impact on our percent assessed. And here again, assessment rates, same as other projects. And that is all I have.
Counsel or public, anybody present need to comment on item number nine? Public, Tom?
Mitch, should I ask you this ahead of time? That's the longest, like, block in town, right? That's, doesn't have any crossroads. If you've got individuals that are like in the middle, that are not in the best of health, where is the best place for them individuals for that handicap parking spot? I got a friend who lives there, his parents are, and it's, could be a challenge to them, and I just thought of it now when you were going through it.
Yeah, so last summer, we reconstructed Fifth Avenue Northeast, just a couple of blocks north of here. And it's a similar situation, but it's not quite as long without an intersection, but still quite a long block. And what a lot of the residents ended up doing is they parked a block south of where they lived, and then they talked to their neighbors, and their neighbors allowed them to walk through their yards to get to their house. So rather than walking down the sidewalk, they walked through their neighbors' backyards. That seemed to work pretty well. Obviously, if there's someone with handicap issues or anything like that, which, like I said, we try to accommodate as best we can. So maybe if you want to give me their contact information, I can talk to them on a one-on-one basis and see what we can do.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mitch. On Sixteenth Street, looks like you're not widening it, you're leaving at the, you're going to add some curb and gutter. But how about those trees? Any impact to the trees on these projects yet that you listed? Removing?
So far, you know, we have some tree removals planned on the projects I've presented up to this point, but they're fairly minimal. Generally, a lot of them are ash trees. Last year, council directed us to go ahead and remove all ash trees on street reconstruction projects due to the upcoming Emerald Ash Borer problem. So most of the tree removals to this point are because of that.
And then replacement? What's the plan for replacement?
On these projects up to this point, we would not be planning to replace trees.
Okay. I got a hankering, we'll be hearing about that. All right, any questions for Mitch? Or any further questions? If not, I'm looking for a resolution on number nine A. So I'll move the resolution. Well, thank you.
Second.
Second. Rebecca? Tom?
Councilmember Obala?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Postma?
Aye.
Vaschusta?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Baskin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Mitch, need a break or anything? We keep on going? Number 10?
I just took a drink while around, okay.
Attaboy. Number 10, public hearing on street improvements on Eighth Street Northwest, Eighth Avenue Northwest to Thirteenth Ave Northwest, and Ninth Street Northwest, Eighth Ave Northwest to Tenth Ave Northwest, project two one one zero one. Looking for resolution for 10A, resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisements for bids. Mitch?
Okay. This project, back to the northwest, we're looking at Eighth Street and Ninth Street Northwest. Eighth Street would go from Eighth Avenue to Thirteenth Avenue Northwest, and Ninth Street from Eighth Avenue to Tenth Avenue. If you've been remembering the last couple of years, we've kind of generally been working our way westward. We did Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Streets the last few years, as well as Ninth, Eleventh, and Twelfth Avenues. So continuing our progression to the west. Here's Sumner Elementary School, just south of Eighth Street. Again, you'll see a lot of the same deteriorated pavement here. This is actually quite bad. We've actually had to patch some of this to get through this winter with our snowplows. So it probably doesn't look quite like this today, but it did last summer. Again, this is probably one of the worst streets in town. So in desperate need for replacement here. So what we'd look to do on this project, again, removing the existing pavement and curb and gutter. Currently, both Eighth and Ninth Street are 30 feet wide throughout their entire length. What we would propose to do is widen Eighth Street from Eighth Avenue to Tenth Avenue to 36 feet wide. And then the remaining Eighth Street and the remaining Ninth Street, we would propose to widen to 34 feet wide. And then we'd install the new curb and gutter and asphalt pavement, make pedestrian and sidewalk repairs, restore boulevards, and plant trees back. And I'll get to that here in just a minute. And then, again, underground improvements, the storm sewer, replacing manholes, catch basins, and some additional sewer main. And then for sanitary sewer, we're looking at replacing all the manholes within the project. And again, providing a sump pump line to each property. And finally, Austin Utilities has the same water main replacement and underground electrical So some of the project schedule, we're looking at starting Eighth Street in late May or early June. And then later on in the summer, in mid-July, we would start Ninth Street. And we expect to wrap up construction on both of these projects in October, again, weather permitting. And I know one of the big issues on this project would be the removal of trees. We are anticipating having to remove 38 trees throughout the entire project. And those tree removals would take place prior to the pavement removal. And I'm sure I'm going to get some questions on that, so I'll just wrap this up quick, and we can go back to that. Same project impacts. Oops. Same benefits to the street project. Total project cost is approximately $920,000, funded by the same funding sources. And we are generating $212,000 in assessments. So again, roughly, you know, 25 to 30% of the total project cost for street improvements. Again, same assessment rates, same payment options. I'll open up for questions.
So you said 38 trees, that just on Eighth Street and Ninth Street Northwest, that project?
Yep, that is on both Eighth Street and Ninth Street. So there's seven project blocks, there'd be 38 trees removed.
And what's the, any pushback on your meeting's public hearing? They held on Zoom with regard to the trees?
There are. From my memory, there was one or two people that mentioned the trees at our public meeting. I'm sure there's others out there that have concerns about it, but those were the only ones that were, I was made aware of at the public meeting or any phone calls that I've received up to this point.
You mentioned tree planting. Are you replacing any of those trees?
Since we are taking or planning to take such a large number on this project, we would plan to put quite a few back, yes.
Okay.
I don't have an exact number on what we would put back. It's kind of dependent on the spacing of the trees that are remaining and the area that we have to work with, but we'd try to maximize that number as much as possible.
That would be much appreciated.
Any other questions for Mitch?
I have a question. Yeah, I know, I believe earlier in the fall, there was talk, we have this new thing with Austin Utilities, where they're going to bury their utilities when we do this sort of work. So if we do put in new trees, does that mean that there won't be any utility lines that they have to trim around going forward?
Yeah, so if there's above-ground electrical lines that are staying in that location, we would not likely plant a tree underneath those due to the issues that you have with having to trim around them. But on this project, they are going to be burying, or have already buried, most of the electrical lines. So that should not be an issue going forward.
Any other questions? Is there any public here wishing to speak on behalf of item number 10A?
I would like to speak. Hi, this is Laura Helly on Zoom.
Okay.
Hi. I just have a couple of comments about the project. One thing I heard in Mitch's presentation is that it's one of the worst streets. And I live on Eighth Street. He said it's one of the worst streets in the city. And I want to say that that only applies to the actual physical street. The people that live there are very nice, above average, I would say.
The note section, they reveal the same thing. Pretty nice people on Eighth Street, but for the pavement.
Good, good. I wanted to say thank you for coming and working on our street. We need our infrastructure to keep up. And it's not the kind of thing where you can keep kicking the can down the road and have a nice town. I also want to say that I fully understand and support Austin's model, which is that I, as a resident, am assessed a fee when the project goes by my house, as opposed to paying a little bit more every year to cover all the street projects. I think we've got a good model, I appreciate it. I want you guys to hear that there are some folks out there that believe in the way that we're doing things. I also will say, the loss of trees saddens me, but we're already, at our particular residents, we're already adding trees to our backyard and so forth. And so I think working together, the city and the neighborhood residents, we can maintain that really nice tree. I mean, the northwest has a lot of streets that are really great for tree coverage, and we want to keep doing that to the extent that we can. We did have Austin Utilities come through last summer to do, I don't know exactly what they were doing, I think they were already burying some of the utility lines. And that crew was very respectful and pleasant to share our space with, even though it was a lot of extra traffic and a lot of extra wheels. They were good people, and I expect nothing less this summer with the city. So I am enthusiastically in favor of the project, fully support it, and thank you for taking care of our streets.
Right on. Thank you, Laura. Any other public? If not?
I do have a question. So I also live on Eighth Street, and this is my first time actually buying a house.
What's your name, please, and address?
My name is Felicia, and my address is 1007 Eighth Street Northwest.
Felicia, last name, please? For the record?
Howie.
Felicia Howie? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so this is my first year buying a house, so I honestly don't understand any of the papers that you guys mailed me. When I did call the city, from my understanding, I would be responsible for, I think it's pretty close to three grand, is that correct?
Sounds about right. Mitch, do you know the exact money? Or can you, for that, you know your address?
I can pull up.
What's the address?
That's approximately correct. I can pull up her exact amount if you'd like to do.
Sure, sure. We like to be all about detail.
You got this down.
The, her exact total is $2,599.77.
Felicia, did you hear that? Ms. Howie?
Okay, so I have a question. Yeah, I have a question on how that works. So I don't have that extra money to spend on repairs for a road. So how does that work?
Well, you want to explain the assessment process, how this goes over the taxes? Over what, 30 years? 15 years? So you'll get options, I think Mitch expressed, there's a way to pay all in full before a certain date, half before a certain date, without interest. Otherwise, 15 years will be coming onto your tax form that you pay, probably in your mortgage situation, like a, same thing, you might pay your city taxes or school taxes, all probably comes off your taxes. So it'll be no out-of-pocket if you want to play that way, and it'll just be assessed to you each year for 15 years at three and a half percent interest. Is that, is that, is that helpful, Ms. Howie?
Like, the first year, it's probably about $250 in principal and interest, then the next year, it's 166 principal, plus another, probably $60 in interest, et cetera, then the interest just keeps dropping.
Okay. So on your, on your, each year, you pay your mortgage, every year it's going to change for some reason or the other. In this particular case, you're going to have a street assessment, there may be a school tax, city tax, county tax, it may change that amount you pay each month. So our finance director, Mr. Dankert, thinks you'll be paying him that 175 to $225.
$250 the first year, and then it'll decrease.
$250 first year and decreased.
$10 each year.
Okay, so my mortgage would go up every single year? Is that what you're saying?
Yep. That's the amount you pay, your mortgage and what your property is.
Mortgage won't change, but your escrow payment will change.
Right, so the amount you pay, if you choose to pay it that way, will go up or down, depending on what the situation is. But in this particular case, because it's a street assessment, it'll raise that property value.
Yeah, if you have your homeowner's insurance and your property taxes escrowed with your mortgage payment, that amount that you pay will change based on this. Otherwise, if you pay those outright, you'll just pay it at the time, so.
Also very similar, as you, as you, once you buy your house, and each year, things will change, again, up or down. Generally, in the past, it's, recent history, it's going up a little bit percentage-wise. So your, what you pay out of pocket each year will change, and you'll get notice of that every year. Any other questions, Ms. Howie?
Okay, that sounds good.
All right.
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public want to comment on item number 10A? All right. Counsel, questions, comments? 10A? Hearing none, looking for a resolution for 10A.
So I'll move the resolution.
Yep, thank you.
I second.
Second, Obala, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala?
Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Postma?
Aye.
Vaschusta?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Baskin?
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Dankert. Number 11 is a public hearing on street improvements on Eighth Ave Northwest, North Main Street to Fourth Street Northwest, and Eighth Avenue Southwest, 27th Street to Dead End, project number 21105. Looking for a resolution on 11A, a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids. Mitch?
Okay, now, this is my last one for the night, I think.
We'll miss you.
You don't have to listen to me anymore. So this project's, again, Eighth Avenue Northwest, Eighth Place Northwest, and Eighth Avenue Southwest, a mill and overlay project. So the northwest portion is going to go from Main Street, past the hospital, and then through Eighth Place Northwest over to Fourth Street. And then the southwest portion, from 27th Street to 29th Street. Again, here are some pictures, you can see pavement issues. This is just to the east of the hospital. Here's a picture of the Eighth Place Northwest. Then Eighth Avenue Southwest near the dead end, it's, you can see the pavement is pretty deteriorated, as well as some drainage issues. So what we plan to do, the northwest and the southwest are a little different. So the northwest is a pretty straightforward project. What we're going to do is we're going to mill off an inch and a half of the existing asphalt pavement. And then the next day or shortly thereafter, we would come in and pave a new inch and a half layer right on top of what was milled off. So that's a pretty straightforward project. The southwest, we're going to kind of split the street in half. We would mill an inch and a half off the eastern portion of Eighth Avenue Southwest. And then the western portion, we would completely mill all the asphalt away and get down to the subgrade rock. We perform some curb and gutter repairs to improve drainage. And then the big difference is, we're going to install tile lines on Eighth Avenue with the sump pump service connections to each house. A lot of the drainage issues that you saw in the picture a couple of slides ago are due to sump pumps going out into the street. And then once that's complete, we would pave two and a half inches on the western portion to get it up to the eastern portion's level. And then we would do an inch and a half over the entire Eighth Avenue Southwest, the complete couple of block stretch there. um, the complete, uh, couple block stretch there. Um, the schedule that we're looking for this project, uh, will be sometime in May or June. Uh, we're going to leave it, uh, kind of open for the contractors to tell us when it works with their schedule. Um, the northwest portion, uh, that's, that work's only expected to take two days, um, a day to mill off the pavement and a day to pave it back. Uh, the southwest portion, uh, should take roughly two weeks, um, one day to mill off the existing pavement, approximately a week to put in the, the tile lines, and then, um, one day to pave it up, actually, excuse me, two days to pave it all back. There's a typo there. Um, and then impacts, uh, for the northwest, uh, people will have access to their driveways at all times, except for when physical milling and paving are taking place. And then the same for the southwest, um, except, um, when we're installing the tile line in front of their driveways, that couple hour stretch, you may not have access. So minimal disruption for this project, um, because it's pretty straightforward and, uh, quick work. Again, same improvements as the other projects. Uh, total estimated cost is $125,000, um, and we are generating, uh, $37,000. So really, right at that 37% to, um, really close to that 40% that we're shooting for. Um, the assessment rates are slightly different for this project, since it's a mill and overlay, um, for a residential property. Um, we assess $5.35 per inch, per foot. So if there, um, is an inch and a half mill, um, it's 5.35 times an inch and a half, and then times your frontage. So a 75-foot lot would have a $600 assessment, and then we just have a higher rate for the commercial properties. And we would have the same assessment payment options for this project. That was all.
Okay. Mitch, how is it determined when, to want to do a mill and overlay and want to do a total street reconstruction? Just particularly Eighth Avenue looks like a number one on your, on your chart for driving around. Looks like it's pretty tuckered out.
Um. It really depends on how the pav, what the pavement condition is and how old the pavement is. Like, um, like Eighth Street and Ninth Street Northwest, um, that we, like the last project that I spoke about. Um, the pavement's in similar condition. It's just really, um, old. It's from likely the 60s or earlier. Um, so there, there's not much to mill and put back, um, because there's, in some places, no curb and gutter, or the curb and gutter is so deteriorated that it doesn't drain properly. So that's the big difference between a reconstruction and a mill and overlay. Generally, with a mill and overlay, the curb and gutter's in really good shape. It's just that top layer of asphalt needs to be replaced. And, and that's kind of a, the way asphalt works. It, the lifespan isn't as long on asphalt street, but it can easily be milled and overlaid to, and extend the life for another 15 years or so.
All right, thank you. Are there any-
So we're actually getting to the point in town where, um, a lot of the deteriorated curb and gutter streets are, are, um, you know, they're, they're getting fewer and fewer. Um, so I would anticipate seeing more of these mill and overlay projects in the coming years.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public, uh, on Zoom that want to be heard on item 11? Hearing none, council, questions, comments on 11? If not, looking for a resolution on 11A?
I'm moved.
Obala, thank you.
Second.
Second, uh, was that Rebecca? Thank you. Tom, roll call, please.
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Okay, item number 12, also Mitch, your last one, I believe, receiving bids for asphalt emulsion oil. Uh, resolution for 12A, looking to award the bid. Mitch?
Um, so, so we receive bids for our asphalt emulsion, uh, which is the oil that we use for, um, seal coating streets in town. Uh, we're going to be, um, I'm not sure on the total number of streets, but I think the last, uh, the streets that were reconstructed in the last five years, uh, will be seal coating this year. Um, so we would recommend awarding the project to, or awarding the bid to, uh, Henry G. Miggs Company.
Okay, questions, comments, council? Hearing none, looking for a resolution on 12A. So moved. Paul?
Second.
Joyce and Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Very good. Thank you, Mitch and Stephen, for those, uh, street projects. Looking forward to those coming up this summer. Uh, moving on to petitions and requests, uh, resolution for number 13, setting a public hearing for March 15th, 2021, for street improvement project assessments.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Tom, looking for a resolution, number 14, approving a purchase agreement with the Carrot Revocable Living Trust. Craig?
Uh, thank you, mayor members. Uh, we got an exciting project here. We're going to hopefully realign 31st Street Southwest. A deal with some safety issues there, I think, long-term. This will open that area up a little bit more for, uh, development, and whether it be visually or, or what have you, but, um, basically build a foundation for some further housing development in this area. Um, we've reached agreement with, uh, Carrot Revocable Living Trust, uh, to donate their land, as well as B&amp;F Properties to donate their land. Uh, in exchange, we would, uh, the road would be of no cost to the adjoining property owners. That's through an agreement with Mauer County, would be providing about $1 million to facilitate the project. City has some additional costs for storm sewer and the like. Uh, some of the, uh, carrot specifics deal with, uh, acquisition of a part, uh, part of it for, uh, a retention pond. Um, that'll be paid for by the city. The exact acreage is yet to be determined. The carrots will still probably retain, uh, part of that lot there, uh, for possible development. Um, the B&amp;F Properties, which is the next one on the agenda, they would be giving back the right-of-way, the vacated right-of-way that runs, uh, up by the exit ramp, essentially. And, uh, the road that went by the former Johnson Floral and to Mandolin Place, uh, will remain. Uh, long-term, that's probably anticipated to potentially be vacated longer-term, but basically be sort of a minimum maintenance road. Uh, Mandolin Place would access on the east side of the property. There's a couple accesses for the Shell Station and the B&amp;F Properties. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but.
Okay. Any questions for Craig, council, on 14?
That's great.
Okay, uh, if no questions, looking for a resolution for number 14. So moved. Jason?
Second.
Thank you, Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. Same project, uh, for, uh, item number 15. Just different owners, looking for resolution approving the purchase agreement for, or with B&amp;F Properties LLC. Craig, any further?
Nothing.
Okay, any questions or comments on 15? Hearing none, looking for a resolution. So moved. Paul, thank you.
Second.
Second, Jason. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 16 is the Austin Morning Lions are donating $1,000, uh, to the Lions Park. Uh, thank you, Austin Morning Lions, looking for a resolution, accepting that donation to the city of Austin for number 16.
So move the resolution.
Jeff, thank you. Second?
Second.
Rebecca, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number 17, approving a contract with Flashing Thunder, Thunder, Thunder Fireworks. Craig?
Thank you, mayor members. Uh, as we have in the past, we provided funding for the fireworks. I think 10,000 comes from city budgets and 20 from Hormel Foundation. I will work with other, uh, partners as well. Um, but we need a contract to do our, uh, piece of the Freedom Fest. Uh, looking forward to it. The fireworks show will be in one evening, uh, this coming year, as in the past, it has been two evenings. So we're anticipating quite a show, so come one, come all. We need council approval.
Thank you, Craig. We also appreciate the partnership with Hormel Foundation and others on these, these items, particularly the Flashing Thunder, Thunder fireworks. Any questions or comments for number 17?
Hey, Craig, can you remind me, did we get a refund on the dollars we'd set aside for last year? Or what happened?
Uh, they didn't. And Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, but they were, granted us forbearance.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If not, looking for resolution number 17?
So moved.
Joyce, second?
Second.
Paul, thank you. Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolu, mo, a resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Just when I think it couldn't get any more exciting than fireworks, we're going to talk about an audit, uh, motion for number 18, waiving the annual audit for the Blazing Star Trail. Tom?
A joint powers agreement exists between the city of Austin and the city of Albert Lee, for which there's about $10,000 of cash sitting in a checking account here that the city maintains. Um, the intent was we'd get some state bonding money, and then those dollars would go together and use that to pay for the trail. However, we've not been able to successfully get those dollars in the past. With that being said, there is a requirement of the joint powers agreement to have an audit every year. And with only $10,000 in it, and a total of $16.74 of interest earned last year, it made very little sense to us, once again, to pay a couple thousand dollars for an audit of nothing. So city of Albert Lee has agreed, again, to waive it, and will keep coming back every year until we hopefully get some bonding money for it.
All that interest we're making, we might not need the bonding dollars.
That's correct.
Right, that, or we could all get a can of pop. One or the other. Seems wise. Thanks, Tom. Uh, looking for a motion, number 18. So moved. Jeff, thank you.
Second.
Rebecca, Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, resolution for number 19, approving a lot consolidation on behalf of the Austin Port Authority. Holly Wallace Show.
Count, uh, mayor and council, this is another minor subdivision, uh, requested to combine two parcels in Creekside Business Park to facilitate the new tech project. And that was reviewed by the city and Austin, city staff and Austin Utilities. Uh, no concerns were noted.
What was it, eight, eight acres out there?
Eight point six.
Total, eight point six?
About eight, a little over eight and a half.
The aerial view looks very attractive, that land. Looks very nice. All right, any questions for Holly?
Holly, is your dog not making an appearance tonight? I kind of miss her.
I try, I bribe them with some chewy toys. Um, so they're being some good right now. Thanks for having me.
Anytime.
All right, if nothing further, looking for a resolution for 19, approving the lot consolidation. So moved. Paul, thank you.
Second.
Second, Joyce, thank you. Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, Tom. 20 is in addition, approving an agreement with the Austin Part-Time Firefighters Relief Association, looking for a resolution. Tom?
Yes, the, um, Austin Firefighters Relief Association has been working on redrafting. Their bylaws have been, in essence, exist since they started in 96. What that's going to do is probably trigger Minnesota Statute 477B .042, which requires an aid allocation agreement on how state fire aid is split. There are a couple pots of money. There's a supplemental state fire aid that only goes to relief associations. So the state sends us the money, we have to transmit it immediately to the relief association. Then there's state fire aid, which is like, they call it 2% insurance money on your homeowner's insurance. That money gets allocated all throughout the state to cities. We get our portion, and in the past, we've given a portion to the relief association based on the bylaws and the benefits they earn, um, based on years of service and how many members there are. With the new aid allocation agreement, we're required to document that better than what we had in the past, which is basically give the state our res, our old bylaws. They agreed that those were good enough back then, but now with this new statute coming into play and them redrafting the bylaws, they've said you need to do an aid allocation agreement. And oh, by the way, it has to be here by March 1st. Uh, we asked them for a sample of one to you, so we could, you know, dummy it up, and they said we can't because we haven't gotten any yet. So I worked with, uh, Fire Chief McCoy and City Attorney Craig Byram and the office, the state ours, office, to have the attached draft agreement drafted that would show how we split our alloc, our aid again. Um, again, this is, if you may recall, we've had years and years of special legislation to allow us to do what we do. This will, can allow us to continue to do what we've always done. It's not going to change anything, how we do it. It's just an agreement that better defines it for the state auditor's purposes. Um, so with that being said, the relief association, um, has signed the agreement. We'll actually talk about it next week at their annual meeting. But we request council approve the aid allocation agreement that will then define how state fire aid is split between us and the relief association. association. In doing that, I would like to note that in section A, the membership, the payments are actually two hundred and fifty dollars increased per section. So if you're there zero to seven years, we used to give you two thousand dollars a year as a, as a retirement benefit. It's now two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So each of those sections has been increased two hundred and fifty dollars. A, it's been a long time since they had an increase. B, we wanna keep them, the part-timers happy because they do provide a great service to our community, and C, we need them to sign the allocation agreement also. So with that being said, we would request approval of such allocation agreement.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Or Tom? If not, looking for a resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff?
Okay.
Tom?
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, honor. And I, one more comment I forgot to mention.
Since this is the first one the state's had, we'd like the ability to make minor changes if need be and not have to come back to counsel, and we'll let City Attorney Byram determine if they're material enough. But since the first one, we figured there might be some changes they'd want.
Any issues with that, counsel?
No.
Okay.
Can we send them our draft and a bill for, here's your template?
Yeah, we, we tried to send them a, yeah.
Include a sewage treatment plant in there, too?
Yeah. Flight fee. IOU.
It's an omnibus bill, really. Everything will be included in there.
Hey, we'll take revenue wherever.
Right. All right. Citizens addressing counsel, anybody on Zoom that wants to address the council? Now's your opportunity. Hearing none. Honored, our counsel, Teresa Lugo. What are your thoughts, if any? How are things going?
Any chance you come up to the microphone? Thank you. Good. I'm looking forward to the street projects because my kids go to Sumner, so I hit those streets, and my vocals sometimes are not pretty good. Hitting those paths.
Right.
So I'm looking forward to the street projects.
Excellent. It'll be a busy year.
Yeah.
Bridge, reconstruction, regular street projects, it'll be a busy year.
Yeah.
Anything else, Teresa?
Oh, just that, your honor.
All right. Thank you. Reports and recommendations? Craig?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor members. Been tracking a little bit the federal COVID assistance. Evidently, they've done a preliminary estimate of what it might mean for communities across the nation. We could, these are estimates now, so don't take them to the bank, but we could receive as much as four point six to five point six million. So we'll be continuing to monitor that. Uh, we've been, the mayor and I have been talking a little bit about council retreat and what council members might wanna see there. If you have comments on that, we'd like to hear from you. I have reached out to Julie Tesh. She's with the Center for Rural Policy Development, kinda giving us an overview of kinda the status of greater Minnesota, and then how Austin kinda fits within that confines. I did reach out to our state senator and state House member about a couple pieces of legislation the coalition is advancing on housing and childcare. Senator Dornick provided positive comments and said that he would look at co-authoring those bills and supporting them, but that's all I have.
Anybody else, department head-wise? Have any?
I didn't have any.
Reports? Okay. Moving on to city council. Joyce?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Rebecca?
I have nothing. Thank you, your honor.
Jeffrey?
Uh, yeah. Apparently, Austin, Minnesota was the coldest Austin in the nation yesterday.
The hell you say.
And I received, yes, the heck I say. I received a call this morning from a gentleman from Austin, Texas. He's a columnist with the Austin American Statesman, the, the main paper down there, and he was, since they're experiencing some cold weather and snow down there and dealing with that, he was doing some research and came across Austin, Minnesota's website and saw our heavy-duty plow and talking about our snow emergency plan, and mentioned the Sterling Shopping Center, the Austin Medical Center, the Eastside Business District, and the safe parking areas by the municipal pool and brick furniture, and he was trying to figure out where these were in Austin, Texas, and he realized they were not. Uh, and couldn't figure out why they'd have a plow in Austin, Texas. So.
Can loan them one for the small feet.
And so he did, he did call myself. I guess maybe having the name Jeff Austin did help as to why he contacted me, but wanted a little advice on how they can deal with the cold weather down there. And we did talk a little bit about SPAM as well. He said they do, used to have a SPAM-arama in Austin, Texas as well, and thought that was quite a coincidence. But some good, good publicity. If anybody has access to the internet or access to the Americans, Austin American Statesman, the article was in today's paper. You can look it up, and it includes some of the pictures from our website and some good publicity, I think, for the city of Austin, and, and a little notoriety for being the coldest one. But luckily, we don't have it quite as bad as they do. They're having serious power issues down there, as well as dealing with the snow that they, they don't get very often. So, just a little, little something there.
Thank you, Jeff. Thanks for representing us.
You bet.
Obala?
Uh, your honor, thank you, and I, I just wanna acknowledge that this, this February is still Black History Month. We got a good publicity a week ago, and I posted something here, and then through news station, they contacted me, and they're like, let's talk. How do you feel about being the first on the city council? So it been, really, we get a positive response, and I got a lot of contact from the resident, and then they're so proud of the work we're doing here and having our city being highlighted. And so, one thing that I wanna bring it up, Austin, Minnesota will be competing, moving forward with Austin, Texas, because before I become a city council, I travel as a student. I always show them the pin. I'd be like, we are bigger than you guys. They're like, ah, what are you talking about? So, and with what, with what Jason happened last year, so now, as a council, if I have the opportunity to travel again, I think they will know how big we are because with all the things we do. So, and then finally, I'm so happy to see northwest, all this reconstruction, and looking forward to see all those beautiful summer evening walking from home to, you know, to the workplace. So, thank you again.
Excellent. Thanks, Obala. Jason?
Only thing is, thanks to Jeff for taking the heat from the Austinites of Texas this time. They'll get the occasional, apparently homelessness has not been solved there, so it's an occasional, I write email, but there's a lot of incredulous people when I posted a picture grilling as they're complaining about thirty-two degree weather. Not outside, are you? It's, why, it's Minnesota. You put your big coat on, you're fine.
That's right.
But yeah, we're a little bit better equipped for that, so I'll have to check out that article.
Thanks, Jason. Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Uh, Michael. Postma?
Nothing, your honor.
All right. The only thing I'd have to report is that, what Craig left out was that we did tour the wastewater treatment plant with Representative Mueller and Senator Dornick, and just to keep them, you know, that, that big facility in the, what might become of an improvement there, front of mind. So they, we did, again, it's always a fascinating tour. I continue to believe that. This one was a little bit ad hoc just because of the weather, but still a very impactful tour. So thank you to, to Stephen and Chad Heard out there for giving that tour. If there's nothing else, we have no work session tonight, so I am interested if you have some feedback on what you think might make a dynamic retreat. I wanna do it just one night. You know, the topics can range from whatever you, you think we might wanna talk about, but to something different. So Craig's with this idea with the, with the, whatever this woman does on a Mankato or something, is that right? The policy.
Right.
So maybe she can bring something that is somewhere else in rural Minnesota to what we, we could add to Austin. So, but if you have any ideas on that upcoming, we don't have a date yet, but anything that you might wanna add to an agenda item for our retreat, just let me or Craig know. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to March one, is this?
Yes.
Next meeting, March one, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Jeff, thank you.
Second.
Second. Joyce, maybe? Rebecca? All right, all in favor? Tom, I guess we gotta do a-
Councilmember Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
LaShusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.[1768.98]